This don't happen very often, we're late.
Six minutes.
Six minutes late. Alright, welcome. Welcome to our combined, we had a combined council meeting and work session because we did not have a work session on Monday. So I want to welcome everybody. This doesn't happen very often because I'm very on time. So we're a few minutes late, but it's, I think it was worth, it was worth a few minutes, right? I want everybody to, to please stand up if you don't mind. I got, I got a good friend of mine, mister Pastor Jim and his wife are here. Great, great couple, great friends, and they're gonna lead us in prayer. Pastor Jim, if you don't mind, grab the mic and, and pray, pray for us, sir. Thank you.
Alright, just bow your heads. Thank you, Lord. Heavenly Father, we just invite you into this building, into this room, and we just thank you for your spirit, your Holy Spirit. Father, I ask that you would just come. We welcome you into our hearts, into this building, and into our concerns of the day. We thank you that this country is still open to prayer, to come before you with our needs. And Lord, we need you. And Father, we've kicked you out of our government at times, out of our schools, out of our economy, but Lord, I thank you for these cities, especially for Loganville, Walton County. Lord, we can come here before you bow our heads and ask you to be our leader, to guide us, to lead us, to comfort us. So Holy Spirit, I just ask that you come over this place and come with wisdom, understanding, on the needs. Father, we just lift up military. We have sons and daughters that are still fighting, and even some that are still, from what we understand, in Afghanistan. Lord, we pray for the, pray for the police department. Those, Lord, that have even taken a bad rap, defund the police, throw the police out, Lord. Father, without law and order, there is no law, there is no order. So Lord, we pray for each family, each police officer that's represented in this city and this county. Lord, we thank you for the teachers, the firemen. Lord, we thank you for these schools. And Lord, we ask that your principals, Lord, we ask that you would rule and reign. And Father, we just thank you for this meeting. We ask that your spirit would come. And Father, there be answers to the questions. And Lord, hearts would be filled with joy as we come into Christmas, Lord. And we know it is the season to be jolly, and the joy of the Lord is our strength. We just pray in Jesus' mighty name, and everybody said, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor, Pastor Jim. Now let's go ahead and face the flag, and my mayor for a day, Levi Burrell, is gonna lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
I. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you. Again, I wanna, I wanna welcome each and every one of you for our meeting. And you notice right beside me, we have, this is the last meeting for 2021, and this is my last mayor for a day. And I've got a little story. It is just amazing. We got a very special guest today, and I'm gonna recognize him. It's, and I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna wait just a few minutes for you guys to, to see this. But anyway, this is my last mayor for a day, and I'm gonna call the meeting to order, right? Mr. Levi Burrell, he is mayor for a day. Alright, so there we go. It is officially called the meeting to order. So with that being said, I'm gonna going, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion. I understand there's some-
I'd like to make an addition to the agenda, please, Mr. Mayor.
That's right. So we're making an addition to the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to add a discussion of a filming permission downtown of under economic development, please.
Okay, so we have a motion to add filming downtown.
Yes.
Discussion on that. We have a second. Any discussion on that addition? All in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. Alright, the addition on the discussion for the filming downtown has been added. And now I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
We have a motion by Danny. Second by Linda. Any discussion? All in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. Alright, the agenda has been adopted. Now we got mayors and, and council items. Last month's minutes, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve last month's minutes.
So move.
Motion by Linda. Second by Lisa Newberry. Any discussions on last month's minutes? All in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. Alright, it's been approved. Last month's financial reports. Ask for a motion for that? We have a motion by Ann.
Second.
Second by Danny Ford. Any discussions on last month's financial report? All in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. Alright, it's been approved, six and oh. Now, we have, before, I'm, I'm gonna present real quick, mayor for a day, which I'm gonna, I'm gonna present, Mr. Levi Burrell. He came by on, a few days ago, and got a chance to tour in the city hall, and got a chance to meet our folks. But this is a special thing about this city. It's just, it's just amazing. On Saturday, I was walking the parade. I normally walk the parade, and I'm, as I'm going down Main Street, I, I see a gentleman, a gentleman stops me. Says, "Mr. Mayor," I say, "Hey, I got somebody I want you to meet." I said, "Well, okay." So this young man pulls out of the crowd with his dad and gives me a big hug, and he didn't wanna let me go. "Well, I gotta keep going, son. I gotta, I gotta keep moving." But he didn't wanna let me go. This gentleman, if you recall, four years ago, four years ago, we had a call, we had a little boy that got bit by pit bull, by, by some pit bulls in Huntington Ridge, four years ago. And we had our fire department come by, come by. Mr. Tim Rainey and Mr. Johnson were there first at the scene, and then, of course, we, we flight, air flighted this gentleman to the hospital, and so on and so forth. That gentleman is here, and the reason why I started mayor for a day, he was my first one. This is, this is how I got the idea for mayor for a day. This was four years ago, and he was my very first one. And what a, I think, Pastor, I think the Lord has, has a hand on this. Because today's my last, this meeting is my last mayor for a day, and it just happens to be that on Saturday, I saw my first recipient of mayor for a day, and he is here. And he, when I, when he saw me, he gave me another big hug, and I'm, I'm just a hugger. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna let his, his mom come up to the front. You could come up to the front and say a few words, and boy, I tell you, it is, now, he look, he's a lot bigger. I remember back, four, four years ago, if y'all remember, four years ago, he was up to my shoulder, and he was, he had a crew cut, right? Remember that? Now, he's got long hair, and he's just as tall as me. So, boy, what a, what a great, what a great thing to have you here. He is now in Loganville Middle School right now. And Cameron is, he is at LMS, he's at Loganville Middle School. And believe it or not, after having that experience with dogs, he loves dogs. He just loves, and he's gonna tell you just a little bit about it. And he is, he is interested in joining the military after, after he leaves. Come on in, Mr. Cameron, and your mama. Thank the city, and, and say a few words on the, to the, for the folks.
Hello. My name is Cameron Wagstaff. When I was nine years old, it all kinda went down. Me and my friend, we were hanging out in the backyard. We were planning on bringing a sister and the dogs. It kinda broke out. It happened so fast, we didn't even know what happened. My friend was so traumatized, we haven't technically talked since we moved out of the neighborhood. We barely talked, and it's all been crazy ever since. It's been like a blur. I still do love dogs. I love my three dogs, and their little rat in the basement we got. He's a chihuahua.
He's not a rat.
He's a chihuahua, and he's, looks like a rat. He's so old, he got one little tooth. So we call him a rat. And he's like 14, and he's on one leg. So I still love my dogs. It's gonna be a sad day when they pass away.
What was the first thing you said to me when I saw you at the hospital?
I don't even remember.
You looked at me and said, "My dogs would never do this to me." And you were never afraid to go home to them. So he's never been afraid since then. But I would like to thank the city and the first responders who made sure that he was safe and that he did not lose his life because he could very easily. So we thank everybody for that.
Thank you, Misty, for being here. Thank you, Cameron. Great to see you. Great to see you, my friend. Alright, so now we're gonna call Levi to the front. Come on, Mr. Levi.
Thank you. Like I said, this is a program that I, that we started a few years ago, and you could see, you just witnessed my first recipient here, and this is something that we've, I think we've done, I lost count, but I think we've done over, wow, over 15, 20 kids in my span as mayor for a day, and they, they, they enjoy it. They enjoy, you know, getting the recognition. It is about recognizing our youth, and they really have a great time. But Levi here, his mama and daddy are here. Kevin and his mama are here, and they own Burrell, so Burrell Roofing here in, in town. But Levi came to our, our city hall a few days ago and met the fire, and met the, the, the fire department, the police department, and he also met the, our staff. So, on behalf of the city of Loganville, officer of the mayor, certificate of honor, let it be heard by be known that on this day, I, Ray Martinez, mayor of the city of Loganville, do recognize Levi Burrell as honorary mayor for a day, given, given this December 19, 2021. Congratulations, Levi. Congratulations. A man of a few words. Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, this, and I'm gonna have Chief come over real quick and, and say, whoever, the police department, and say a few words. We had a very good event. This is, I'll tell you, we got, we got the best community here in, just anywhere. This past Saturday, I was blessed enough to be part of the Shop With A Hero, and Russ Butcher, you know, he organizes it. Mike, I'll tell you, what a great event. Can you speak a few words about all the, all the folks that benefited from that, and what you guys do?
Absolutely. As the mayor was saying, Russ Butcher with, who is the pastor of Church at The Grove, and I organized the very first Shop With A Hero 15 years ago. This was a very, the 15th one. The very first one, we did about 25 kids, and this past year, we were able to do 125. And what we do is we take kids who've not, not necessarily disadvantaged, but have had not so good of experiences with public safety, either through their parents' misbehavior, or whatever the case may be. A lot of those end up being underprivileged kids. But we take them to Walmart, we pair them up with a police officer, fireman, or an EMT, and give them a hundred dollar gift card, and let them shop for whoever they want to. The, the, one of the very first things that we found out about these kids are, they have a lot to teach grownups when they go in, because very few of them shop for themselves, very few. I've actually bought several bicycles for kids that didn't wanna buy anything for themselves, or, because it's, it's really touching that they wanna buy for their families and not for themselves. But we, we, we had great participation again this year, as the mayor was saying. We're very well represented by our police department, the fire department, Walton County Sheriff's Department. We had officers from Gwinnett PD. We've had officers from all over participate. So it's, it's really a wonderful thing. We enjoy it every year. And we appreciate that Walmart partners with us every year to, to let us do it there. And they also give us a pretty good donation with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
And Lisa Newberry has a few words to say about that, too.
Yeah, I'll ditto everything that Chief says. You guys really have it down pat. That's such a nice event. It's so well organized. And, and like Ann, I do play funco with a group of ladies, and we donate some, some money also. So, it's so nice to go there and see these kids, because just like you say, they wanna shop with their family and everybody else other than themselves. You have to kinda talk them into spending that money on themselves, which is really what it's meant for. So you guys do a really nice job.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. This is, and this is, you know, I don't know if you know this, Mike, but this is John Day, the manager of Walmart, texted me that same day, and I'm gonna read very briefly the text he sent me, which is very stunning. Mayor, I hope I'm not disturbing. I was proud that I was today, that I'd be a small part of the Shop With A Hero event that took place here. It was overwhelmingly to see all the children faces as the, as the, as we were shopping with our city and, and county service. But I was very touched and wanted you to know how great you people did. I did speak to Chaplain Ross, and he and I are going to work on getting a Walton Foundation grant for next year's event. So Walmart is stepping up to the plate with a, with a Walmart Foundation grant. So this is, this is something that's gonna just, it's gonna be bigger and better next year. So thanks again to our police department, and even Walton County, too, Sheriff's Department, too. So thank you. Thank you. Alright, so we're coming down to committee slash department reports, starting with planning and development. Chairwoman Lisa Newberry.
Mayor, we have no cases to hear tonight, and that's because we had no one fill out any applications that we're asking for a reason.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Coming down to finance slash economic development, Chairwoman Ann Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items on the agenda, the waste management, and then the filming. So let's start with the waste management. And Rick Jarvis is here for questions, if, if anybody has any. What we discussed is, is basically over the last 24 months, or 20 months of COVID, there have been significant increases in fuel, labor, recycling has, cost has how much doubled, almost doubled?
Went from zero to $70 a ton.
Yeah. Trash, everything has gone up. I mean, and both commercial and residential requested an increase. In the meeting that we had, residential in the 20 months since COVID hasn't missed a single pickup. We have had some challenges with commercial. The committee met, and we talked about granting an increase. We recommended granting an increase The committee met, um, and we talked about granting an increase, we recommended granting an increase for the residential side and potentially granting a, an increase to commercial in ninety days, but they have some things that they have to agree to fix, which we can go over, one of them is, I sat down with Susan and Kaylee who, who handle the commercial side of, of the garbage side and they need their own point person, since the buyout, they've kinda gotten into a, uh, one-eight-hundred kind of tree that they can't get the response that they got before. So we asked for our own point person for our staff to call. Hauler call training, hauler call is when, uh, the staff can actually go into a computer program and find out where a car, where a truck is so that rather than having to put everything on hold and then call somebody at waste management and then wait for a callback, they'd be able to log in and see. So we've asked for that as a contingency. A carryover list, these are the contingencies, a carryover list is when something doesn't get done, somebody calls for a roll-off. It's supposed to be delivered today, but it doesn't happen, right now, we don't know about it because, until the customer calls and is angry. So a carryover list is what we would get faxed that said, "Hey, these didn't get delivered," so we could be proactive. And then the last thing was a contract, uh, year-over-year max. So the contract gets a, a increase every year, but we've asked for a max. So that's kinda the high level, um, does anybody have any questions that was in your packet and then we can talk about rates?
No, I just wanna say, I think we're very fortunate because I've heard stories of neighboring cities where they have not been able to get trash pickup for a week or two weeks at a time, so it's very appreciative that you guys have not skipped a beat.
Thank you.
I agree, and, and I wanna address something else, um, you know, it pains me to do an increase and pass it along to the citizens, cause I don't like it. In neighboring cities around us, when they have said, "No, we're not gonna give them an increase and it goes out to bid," the costs have almost doubled. And I would rather pass on a couple dollars to a, to a resident, which I hate, but it is what it is, we're still very cheap, very inexpensive comparatively, than to, than to double somebody's cost. So the information's in your packet, um, open to questions if anybody has any. Okay, so let's talk about rates, Danny, you had a, you had a recommendation, I know, Rick, you were asking for two dollars, per garbage can, but not an additional charge per extra can.
Well, we'd like the dollar a can, but I mean, that was, uh, not a big deal.
Right.
Only extra can, it was at six.
Right.
What's the current right now, Rick, for the?
Six dollars for an extra can, we're asking go to seven for a second can.
What was the commercial percentage?
It was ten percent, but in the committee, we talked about, um, it was ten percent with a ninety days. And then I suggested a eight percent with sixty days.
So I, I, I do wanna make sure that we do not grant that increase immediately because we do, they have done a lot of work, but they need to, we need to get the service on the commercial side up a notch. And I think that doing these things, Steve emailed, I think the committee, that last night and again this morning, uh, he had a personal issue, he, he was not able to be here.
His folks are down in Florida and they're.
His mother's ill in Florida, yes. But he agrees, he agreed to everything, everything that we asked for, so, go ahead.
Ann, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to say this real quick, and Rick, you, you correct me if I'm wrong. The extra can, what I've noticed is that those cans are big. Uh, a family of, it's, sometimes what I've noticed out there is that, um, if we're a family, and I understand it's Christmas, you know, certain holidays, that can gets filled. But what I've noticed is that the extra can, the reason why some of the homes have that extra can, even two or three, because they're, they're, they're bringing their businesses home with them. An example would be.
Well, there's that and plus all the, uh, to-go orders now, because restaurants are, uh, they weren't open. They were all drive-through, so all the commercial garbage was coming to the house, is where it was coming.
I know, yes, and I know of a particular family that has a pressure washing business. And they use that extra can to bring all the buckets and all the stuff leftover from their business.
We do get that, we do.
To do that, so I'm, I'm gonna go on the record, I, I don't know what the council feels, for the, for the extra one dollar for the extra can.
For the second can.
Uh, for the second can, because, am I, am I, I'm not saying everybody, cause I know there's sometimes a family of five or six that, that, but most of the folks, uh, use that can for other than personal.
Right.
Rick, how many of those cans?
There's six hundred and eighteen, I think, uh, second cans in the city.
Six hundred and eighteen extra cans, is that what you're saying?
Right, they have six hundred, uh, six hundred and eighteen houses have a second can.
And I even showed at the committee, I showed where I had a picture and Kyle, you don't have, it's, I had a picture that I showed, I, I don't think Kyle has it, of an example of what happens when they bring that stuff over. Perfect, thank you, Kyle, alright, this is, this is what, this is what we, uh, we go through sometimes.
And we're supposed to be can only.
And it's supposed to be can only, and that's only one example, so, uh, and these are folks that, you know, that's not there anymore, by the way, because your folks have to pick it up, so that's just an example, so, anyway, Ann, that's all for my comments.
Well, and, and I agree with what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, but in the example of this picture, we need to be really careful, because Rick, I know that you were big on customer service and I know if you don't pick that up, then, you know, Susan, somebody, somebody's gonna get a phone call.
We try to make the call ahead of time, if we see it.
But, they're not contracted to pick this up. And I don't, I don't wanna set the example that, that we expect you to pick that up, because this is not what we're paying for.
And we know you don't.
I, okay, I, I just, this is terrible, I mean, it's terrible.
And we, we know, y'all don't, and that's, my point is, a lot of the bigger, bigger companies have it, they have all these, everything on their truck to prove somebody wasn't out. And then all it does is make everybody mad, everybody goes, so, when somebody calls in a skip, we don't try to argue, we just go get it. Because at the end of the day, we're gonna have to do that anyway.
Okay, can the city not do anything when they, when this happens, can the city not give them some kind of warning or some kind of reprimand for? Cause they're really, they're really not doing what they're getting, I mean, they're not paying.
They're not paying for that, right, but, but he is.
Yes, I know.
I, yeah, no, I agree, I mean, I, I have an issue with it, I don't know how to fix it.
You might have a good idea about it.
And your city, for the most part, is a good city, I mean, it's, uh, most folks are understanding, they usually call in if there's a situation at the house, we're gonna have extra, something happened, and you know, it's, and we're understanding on that. And then you have some people that do abuse the system, they are. But it's, it's a very small number, it's not, you're a good city, you really are.
Well, and, and I know that there was a discussion a while back about potentially selling a sticker or a bag for extra trash.
Yeah, we talked about that, City Snellville does a bag program.
City Snellville does it, the problem is you just, you're just, I mean, no pun intended, kicking the can down the road. Because then they say, "I had a sticker on every bag, but there's two of the bags that don't have a sticker."
The second can idea is fantastic, I mean, the, no, no other city does that. Uh, Snellville does not even give them the opportunity. So, the second can is a great deal, at, even at seven dollars to get the trash picked up.
I don't know if everyone knows, but Walton County has a, a program similar to that where you can purchase green bags, I think they call them greenies.
And go to the convenience center.
And you take it next to Toby Sexton Tire, there's a drop-off there, as long as they're in that green bag that you purchased, then they'll take the extra trash.
And we've suggested that before, people that constantly don't want the second can, they could go get their green bag and anything extra, take it to the convenience center. So that would solve their problem, or get the second can, which is gonna be cheaper than those green bags.
Well, and I think we have a little bit of a PR issue, doing trash and then selling bags. I think, I think a lot of in Walton County may or may not already have trash service, they just buy the green bags to be able to dump the, the regular trash. I don't, it's, it's just a sticky wick, and I don't really know how to fix somebody that clearly, and I, I hope this doesn't identify anybody, but, that doesn't play by the rules. So, any other questions, thoughts? Would, uh, anybody, everybody be in agreement with a residential two-dollar immediate increase? How do you feel about the extra cans?
I'm in favor for the extra cans.
I, I mean, I'm not in favor of the extra can, but it's up to y'all, majority votes.
Extra can, yes, yes.
This is just residential first, we're just dealing with residential first. Bill, how do you feel about it?
Yes.
Okay, so then, everybody wants to do two dollars, straight pass through to the residents, increase to residential, a dollar per extra can? Alright, then I'd like to make a motion that we do an increase in residential, two dollars for the main can, one dollar for the additional can, effective. What's the next bill date, Natalie?
This, this current billing will go through December thirtieth, thirty-first.
So January one, okay, I'd like to make that motion.
Alright, so we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second by Linda, any other discussion on this topic?
So, when we do increases, do we normally put it on a bill so that they'll see it coming out ahead of time? And then, so it would go in effect February, is that, I mean, like?
I don't, Natalie, what do we, what do we, guys, what have we traditionally done?
A notice on their bill of any increase.
Is it too late to do the December bill?
Uh, yes, yeah, it would act, it would go in December's billing, but it would be effective January. So, he would charge additional in January, but we wouldn't pay for it until the end of January. So that'd give us time to notify the customers.
Okay, so we will.
There'd be a little bit of lag for the city, but we would be able to recoup it in February. So we would pay at the end of January.
Could you do February first?
Not collect it till February.
Okay, so let's do February first, he agreed to February first, that way we're not, we're not charging. So then I'll amend the motion to be February first with notice to residents in the January bill.
Okay, good.
Is that okay, Krista?
I'll second that.
Is that alright?
Okay, so we got the amended, so we have a motion, now we have a second by Jay, any other, any other discussion on this? All in favor, city five, saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Alright, pass six and oh.
Alright, and then, um, I have the, the second part is the commercial.
Let me jump in right quick before we move on to the commercial, cause I believe you said that you wanted a cap on the contract? Contractor has a current cap on years four and five.
Okay.
At five percent of the CPI, just wanna make that for the record.
Okay, so yeah, I'll put that in my second motion, is that okay? Um, so now let's talk about commercial. Again, there's, there's really three caveats since the current contract has a CPI cap. Uh, does anybody have any questions about what any of it means? Any questions? Would everybody support a, an eight percent increase in sixty days if they meet these criteria?
Yes.
And that would be probably for a year or two year, how long is that?
For the remainder of the contract. Until the CPI comes up again in January of next year?
Yeah, so the, where the current contract reads, started in twenty-twenty, years one, two, and three, they do not receive an increase unless they have something unforeseen, which we all feel COVID is unforeseen. In years four and five, they can do a five percent, up to a five percent increase without any approval from you all, cause it's in the contract.
Well, can we limit the CPI increase next year since they got, I mean, we're already giving them more than five percent this year, ahead of, ahead of it?
They would agree to amend the contract.
Well, are we amending it anyway since we're giving them an increase early?
Would that be an amendment in the contract, since you're paying them more?
Well, much of the provision is in it.
The provision is in it where they can ask for it.
If they can ask for it, then you would have to approve it.
We don't have to amend the contract since it's already in there. But if you wanna reduce the cap, then you would have to amend the contract.
I don't wanna reduce the cap, I just wanna push it so that in, in twelve months, they don't get another increase and then twelve more months, they don't get another increase. No offense, Rick, they, 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 they.
That's the way the contract's written.
Okay.
Well, if they're already gonna get an increase and they're not, they're not doing a great job as it is, I mean.
Right, well, they have the same outside-the-box cost issues. I mean, that's, that's the issue, it's not a, it's not a pat on the head, it's a, they have a, an operating cost issue.
And if anybody wants to push careers, for y'all folks out there that's got some young ones coming up that maybe aren't college-bound, CDL drivers are gonna get to where they're gonna start making six figures, it's coming. I'm just telling y'all now, it's coming. It, sooner rather than later, I've been doing this forty years, it's coming.
One of your drivers or somebody was offered a three thousand dollar signing bonus?
One of my, I lost one, uh, last Sunday night, texted me, went to another company with a signing bonus.
Three green.
I mean, there, it just keeps doing this, and there's not enough guys coming out of school with the CDL license that, to, to fill all these positions, cause a lot of, there's a lot of older drivers that have retired, that have left since this COVID hit, they've all left it. I'm just telling you, it's coming.
So I would, I mean, the sixty days is gonna, are they on the same billing cycle, commercial, they, it's all the same bill, right?
Yeah, we don't have to prove the commercial tonight, cause we told them sixty days, we can address it back in February, the commercial side. Gives you more time to think about the cap, unless you just wanna approve tonight.
Well, I mean, doing anything about the cap isn't gonna fix it, cause we're under contract. And I, I would like to show good faith to Steve, because, I mean, we all, we all talked about it, I mean, I, I don't know how y'all feel about it, but I would say a March first increase with a February bill notice, cause that would be right at sixty days, is that reasonable?
I'll probably put it all in the same notice, honestly, if you go ahead and decide on it.
Okay.
Because it'd be two notices, it would.
Well, I guess if they're doing a January or February one, then we'll catch, so here would be my, here's what I would recommend, and if everybody agrees, then I'll make a motion. I would move that we would increase commercial by eight percent with a start date, a billing start date of March first, uh, with the contingencies of three things, they provide their own point person that we can contact, our staff can contact. Our staff gets hauler call training by the end of January, and we begin receiving a carryover list the first of January. And Steve already said that that was all doable. Anybody have any questions, comments?
That is a motion, correct?
What do you point out, Danny?
I like, I thought maybe she had a question.
No, I was just gonna tell you, he's already started some of the things that you.
Yeah, no, he did, he did, you know, yeah, that's why, yeah, that's why I'm trying to give as much time on it, cause I think he's, I think he's totally willing to do it.
Yes.
And, and we're, like I told the other night, we're working on some other things, some ideas to bring to council that
Right.
uh, will get us involved in fixing some of those fires.
Right. Would everybody agree and vote on that motion, is, is okay? Can I just turn that into a motion? Okay, ta-da, it's a, it's a motion.
Alright, so we have a motion, eight percent, starting March first with the three contingency that Ann just mentioned. Alright, we have a second by Danny Ford, any other discussion on this topic? All in favor, city five, saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Alright, good pass.
Thank you, thank you, Rick. Alright, the other thing that I have, um, which I've kinda talked to all of y'all before the meeting, this just came up, um, Monday night and then we got hold of it, uh, this afternoon. There is a gentleman, uh, in a studio that would like to film downtown. We don't know the name of the film, right now, they're calling it Zoltar in quotation marks, I guess just for privacy sake. As some of you, as you know, we've had other film companies approach us that maybe the film type would not have met our code. This one is not that way. So they want to film between January twenty-fourth and April twentieth. Uh, they'll be occasionally on Main Street for filming, three days planned between January twenty-fourth and tenth, but that doesn't include prep or wrap days. They're gonna rent, um, land at fifteen hundred dollars a month, uh, do the parking lot at Main Street, the Main Street parking lot, the Loganville Health Department, city hall for people coming in and out. They're, uh, they want a price sheet for the town green and the historic Rock Gym and Convention Center. Uh, they've already talked to GDOT about doing the current, the correct, uh, permits for shutting everything down. And they've talked to Chief Lowry, uh, Assistant Chief Lowry at the Loganville PD about. They talked to you? Okay, well, they put, they put. Alright, they talked, they talked to Major Warnock about, um, he said, well, let me check this, it says, "He is on board with closing down streets, providing they fill out the permit form and schedule within a timeframe, you can staff the request," is that right? Okay, okay, perfect, and that's who we're talking about, it's Mr. Williams at Zoltar. No idea what it's actually is, but hey, it could be Yellowstone, that'd be great, wouldn't it? Okay, um, so does anybody have any questions other than what I've got in your email, in the email that's in front of you? And I did, just for everybody's notice, since, uh, Brandon is coming aboard, um, I did discuss that with him. So he was, I didn't wanna, didn't wanna put this ahead of next month's council, but we have a time issue, cause they need to get it scheduled by the end of January. So, thoughts, questions? Did I make a motion that we approve, uh, Mr. Williams' desire to film, per the details of this email and the payment? And then, Danny, we do need to get, I guess, a price sheet for the town green and the Rock Gym to them.
Yeah, I believe Kristi and Robbie's already working on that, and there will be a contract that will have to come. Ability insurance as well will be produced.
With standard things for the mayor to review and Robin to review, with the caveat that. With standard things for the mayor to review and Robin to review, with the caveat that, that whatever they're filming does not go against our ordinances. So that's my motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Ann Loganwood, right? Is there Hollywood, Loganwood? Loganwood, right? We're going to be the next Hollywood up here. Loganwood. So we have a motion by Ann Hutsinger.
Second.
We have a second by Linda Dodd. Any other discussions about our film industry coming to town?
Question.
Yes.
They also be building temporary structures, so make sure you are aware of that, that would come down after the film.
Okay. In, in the park, in the land or the parking areas? I think mostly a bit on the land over two-ten Main Street, where it says potential location. Not in the middle of the street. And, and also, they have talked to the existing business owners up and down Main Street, gotten their buy-off, talked about how to accommodate them in their parking, so I think they've done their due diligence.
And they would close Main Street, but that would be on them to get the permit, so...
With GDOT.
That's right.
With GDOT, so there would be a lot of upset people when Main Street closed, but that's between them and GDOT.
That's correct, that's correct. All right, so we have a motion by Ann, we have a second by Linda. Any other discussion on this topic? All in favor, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? All right, your motion passed, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's the end of my motions.
All right, thank you. All right, coming down to Public Safety Committee, Chairman Jay Bowman.
Thank you, Mayor. And now for tonight's fun. The first thing is the Masters Car Club had a twenty-twenty-one Back to Blue Car Show, and they donated eleven thousand, two hundred dollars to the Loganville Police Department. I believe this is their second donation. Last year, we got eleven thousand. You did gear? Some, you got some new gear?
Yeah, big one, it's on. Last year, we did helmets.
Helmets, that's right. So this year, we're going to go ahead and use that money to buy six AED devices, two cabinets and associated signs, as well as an infant and child keys for all six devices. We'll have them permanently mounted in the booking area of PD and second floor in the courtroom. Assistant Chief, I missing anything?
Uh, we'll also have four, one for each patrol shift. Each shift will have one of them.
Looks like we got a discount of eighteen hundred dollars, so the amount will be ten thousand, two hundred, wait, ten thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-eight cents. I'd like to make a motion. We approve the donation from the Masters Car Club.
All right, we have a motion for the donations. We have a second by Lisa Newberry. Any discussion? All in favor, all in favor, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion passed, sir.
Excellent. And now, Assistant Chief, stand up there, please. Sorry. One of my favorite guys in the police department, Dustin Peterson, please. Step up, step up. Oh, sorry, Mike, you go first. Peterson's the best.
One of the...
Talk to Ron.
Your favorite people.
No, Peterson's great.
Three main things that, that in my tenure with this department, that I'm, I feel very proud to have been involved in the creation of. One is the Shop with a Hero, that we talked about earlier. The other, oh, the second one is the Donut Dash, that benefits Walton County Special Olympics. And the third one is probably the first one we did, and that's the creation of our School Resource Officer Program. First part of two thousand and six, I'm talking with the sheriff and decided to take over the protection of our schools through the creation of a School Resource Officer Program. Dustin Sergeant Peterson was one of the three original officers, one of the, two of them are still remaining. He and Lieutenant Cantrell. During that time, since two thousand and six, that's right, right, when, two thousand and six? Since then, these guys have been recognized by the National Association of School Resource Officers nationwide, four times. And most recently, Dustin was re, uh, recognized nationally as Resource Officer of the Month. That speaks volumes on his, his abilities and his, the way he carries himself during the job, because it's not something that we campaigned for, not something he's nominated for. The NSRO, or Nazro, they picked that person. We don't have anything to do with it. So we wanted to recognize Dustin and show his, our appreciation to him for a job well done over the years and the fact that he was nationally recognized.
Thank you, sir.
I would also like to add that Dustin is a former NYPD police officer. Greatest. And he is a, he is a pretty good singer. If you haven't, if you haven't heard him sing, he's got a band. He, he could, he could rock and roll, right, Justin?
Yes, sir.
He could rock and roll a little bit. He's pretty good.
Okay, I got another one, I got another one. So every year, the Loganville Police Department, the officers pick an Officer of the Year. And this year, they nominated Clint Kitchens as the Officer of the Year. He's a great guy, too. Funny, real funny guy. So I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Chief Lowry.
So I, I want to tell y'all real quickly how we got Clint. Y'all know, a, a number of times, we have expressed and, and told you some of the things we tried to do in, in the current situation of trying to recruit police officers. So the way we got him was, y'all know I love to go krackie fishing, and I had a freezer full that my wife was on me about. So I told Greg and the child, next week, I'm going to do a fish fry for the, for the officers and staff. So that's, that's what we did. We all cooked it up, made a big to-do. And it just so happened that Clint was doing a ride-along with one of our current shift lieutenants, Brian Lomacho, who he worked with at another agency. So we came in to eat, and I know y'all have all seen this, had this same situation. You look at somebody and you know you know them, but you can't quite put your finger on it. Well, I kept doing that, so when he got ready to leave, I said, look, I know, I know you from somewhere. So we talked just a minute. He said, you probably know my daddy. Well, his father recently retired from Newton County Sheriff's Office after forty-one years in law enforcement. So he comes from a family with some state and power, so that's a good thing. So I want to point out, for anybody watching out there on YouTube, if you're trying to decide how to recruit police officers, do a fish fry, you'll get a good... So Clint's been with us a little over two years now. His background in law enforcement is, is extraordinary. He has worked as a patrol officer over in Covington. He has been a SWAT team officer. He has worked at a DEA Drug Task Force. He has also done criminal investigations in analyzing cell phones that come out of Georgia State prisons. He's done a whole lot of stuff, and in addition to that, and of course, it's close to mine and Greg's, hard, his fellow farms instructors. He's one of us, and we put him to work immediately on the first range session we had. So we, we got a good one through offering some crappy and hush puppies. But like Mr. Bowlin said, we, we do every year, an Officer of the Year Award. And when we started this a number of years back, the chief made it clear to me, he said, I don't want to pick. I want these, I want them to pick. So what we do is basically, we send out a ballot. They vote anonymously, and his vote and my vote counts the same as everybody else's. And we get those in, and of course, we add them up, and, and this year, I'm proud to say Clint was selected as our Officer of the Year. And of course, his big surprise, he owes y'all that with the holiday dinner, when I announced his name, his shifts all over there and yelled out like they just won a Super Bowl, so... It, it's something that, that the guys that do get it take some pride in, because it's not picked by he and I. They're chosen by their peers. And, and I'll say this about Clint, obviously, I think you already know, he's my kind of fellow. And, and as, as has been said, he's, he's great in the public, and I'll put it to you this way, if you, if you don't like Clint Kitchens, there's something wrong with you. It's not him. So congratulations on your...
Just to let everybody know, I'm still the biggest one here. He's not quite as big as I am. Okay, so, um, one other thing, something I've been involved with for many years, the Walton County Empty Stocking Fund is this Saturday at eight AM at the Journey Church located at one thousand Royal Point, Royal Park Drive, Monroe. From, what's that?
Between.
What?
I think it's in between.
It says here, Monroe. So if you want to volunteer, show up, pack up your car or truck, and you can deliver baskets to those in need. Last but not least, I always want to recognize Robbie Schwartz, Gracie Boss, Chrissy Daniel, Jeremy and his great crew for the parade. We had an incredible parade. Me and the mayor were in it. Newberry was very helpful as well. We had a great time, and the rumors are true. I did dress up as Buddy the Elf, and Janice Trivel didn't even recognize me. So anyways, that's all I have for you tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, coming down to Public Utilities/Transportation, Chairman Bill DeVall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item on the agenda tonight. There's a, the Gwinnett Gate Valve, which is located at Old Loganville Road, Brand Road in seventy-eight. It was involved in a, I guess, a collision, you'd say? Is that what it was? And it's damaged, and we're, the city's asked for, to repair it, repair the valve at a, at a cost of sixteen thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and five cents. And, and that is, of course, they are still seeking damages, so that we'll get reimbursed for that. Anything you want to add? Well, and the Monroe water line is up and running, so yeah. So, so anyway. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the repairs to the, the gate valve at sixteen thousand, one hundred and forty-four thousand, five cents.
We have a motion by Bill. We have a second by Ann. Any other discussion on this? All in favor, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign?
All right, motion passed, sir. Thank you. And as Danny was suggesting, we, the Monroe water is, is flowing to us, and I guess we're going to be cutting back on Gwinnett. Already turned off.
So water line is working, is that correct? It's already on, so we got water, we got more water. All right, is that all you got, my friend?
That's all.
All right, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, Public Works/Facilities Chairwoman Linda Dodd.
Well, I have no actual items, however, I would like to say that I missed my first Christmas parade this year for the first time that I've been on council and was elected, the first time. Due to my daughter, she fell last Wednesday and fractured her leg under, right under the knee, and she's been in the hospital. We took her to PMOT, they sent her to Grady. She's been there since Thursday. They did surgery on her leg Monday. She's got eight pins in her leg. No weight on her leg for three months, then probably six months before she'll ever be able to walk again. So if y'all don't know me personally, but I would ask for prayer, if you're a prayer warrior, to pray for my daughter. She's in extreme pain. So I would just appreciate, but, thank you, Mr. Allen. Sorry.
Please pray for Annette, great lady. So, thank you, Linda. All right, coming down to Human Resources, Chairman Danny Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under my report tonight, it's the post-retirement health insurance. And I'm going to start off with letting our city manager, Danny, kind of brief us on where we're at.
Okay. So the post-retirement insurance is something that we've been looking at since this past February, March. Something we wanted to change while we were looking at the budget. You know, I was asked to come up with a plan that, you know, could be a little bit more beneficial than what it currently is. We do have a current retirement insurance for employees that meet the rule of eighty, so that means their years of service at Loganville or another city that is in GMA, and their age equals eighty, they could retire. Upon retiring, they could accept the current plan that we have for employees. And that current plan is saying that, you know, the city would pay X amount for the spouses, the children, and the employee. So we're looking at changing the plan a little bit, because it's only eligible for those who meet the rule of eighty, who are year, sixty years old, which is only about thirty-four of the one hundred and nineteen employees that we currently have. It's more of a plan geared towards the older staff that came here late in their life, but it really doesn't do anything for the employees that started here in their twenties. Eighteen, about some are in eighteen. Chief Lowry's son started when he was eighteen, so... But it doesn't do anything for those that would do thirty years, and they would have the ability to even be offered insurance after they retire. So we know that we cannot offer insurance to all the employees and pay for it at the same time, far as financially. So what we did was, we came up with a plan, and I say we, I asked the committee of staff, Christie Ash, HR Director, Natalie Warnock, Finance Director, Chief Lowry, Assistant Police Chief, Tim Johnson, Fire Chief, Mike McDaniel, and I believe that was it. Ansley, I'm sorry, thank you, Assistant HR Director. To come up with something that could be beneficial and also cost the city no more money than what it currently is paying. So outside of that, it was to say, we had some good meetings, is understatement, several months. We came up with a plan that was five hundred dollars that the city would pay per month, max. So in the event that the insurance will go up, we all know the insurance goes up, the city's responsibility is only five hundred dollars. It's more of a liability savings versus funding a plan that's unknown fund. So after we come up with that dollar amount, we went before the actuary, who does a study, which is a private firm that GMA uses. We have to use their firm. And we told them what we want to do, and they did an actuary study. It came back last month. We went before the HR committee and expressed our, or showed our findings to them. And with that being said, I'll send all you tonight, this is the last page in what I emailed you. It's the Segal Report, if you go to page ten. It's in your packet. It's this page right here. It just shows that current employees, upon meeting the rule of eighty with twenty years of service with the city of Loganville, could receive benefits after retirement, at the cost of five hundred dollars per month until they reach the age of sixty-five. At the age of sixty-five, it stops, or upon the death, which hopefully, they'll meet sixty-five first. But either event, sixty-five or upon the death, the benefit would stop to not only them, but also to the spouse or whatever they have elected when they retire. There is no retirement plan in GMA. They don't offer it, so anybody that retires has to be on the, what's called the active plan. And what that means is active is employees that are current. Retirees get the cost savings for active employees, so whatever the city offers for active employees, they also offer for retirees. The difference is, they only get five hundred dollars, and whatever the cost is, after that, the employee bears one hundred percent from now until they're sixty-five. So hypothetically, if the, if insurance is a thousand dollars, city would pay five hundred, the employee would pay five hundred until they're sixty-five. If it goes to twelve hundred, city still pays five hundred, they pay seven hundred. So that was a more stable, far as actuary. And another option that we added was to create a trust fund to fund this. Currently, we do not have a trust set to fund the retirement pension, retire, I'm sorry, the retirement insurance. We do have to book that liability at the end of the budget. And as you can see, if we created a trust, it's going to save a little over seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, far as liability, to the city. So I would recommend that we approve option three, which is this. Retirees could retire with a current retirement plan. The city would pay five hundred dollars, the, the retiree would pay the difference. The city would pay five hundred dollars, the, the retiree would pay the difference. Now, if you approve that, there's another step that we have to do. Upon approving whatever you approve tonight, it has to go before GMA, and it's in another document I sent you, where we spell out verbatim what you all say. That goes before them, they approve it, then you have to approve it. So more likely, we'll come back in January and ask you to approve that document if it's approved tonight. Any questions, I kind of said a lot.
Ann, do you want to add anything to it as far as finance goes?
Do you want me to talk about kind of the high-level bullet point?
Right.
This is kind of what you and I have talked about, so this is just going to be a high-level bullet point, because I did a deep dive and, for anybody that wasn't in the committee meeting, so, the rule of eighty is your age plus your years of service. So, if you started the city of Loganville at age twenty, at age fifty, if you worked all the way through, that hits the rule of eighty, because it's your age plus your years of service. Under the current plan, however, the way it is right now, you can retire, but you get no benefits at all until it's age sixty. Is that right?
You don't get them all.
You don't get them at all, right. So, that, that's the big, that's the big give here, that, that we are getting, the rule of eighty, you get to retire. So that person at age fifty, with thirty years of service, could retire.
With health insurance.
With health, well, with five hundred dollars towards their health insurance, looking at the scenario three that we're talking about. The big heartburn I had, um, at our committee meeting was how we were going to handle spouses, because covering the employee, but then all of a sudden a spouse who had been covered forever, now being, having to go shop their insurance. What we found out, I think today, was that spouses could continue to be covered under the same plan at the employee's expense, or whatever plan they had. So, if you had an employee at age fifty that could retire, they would still get the five hundred dollars towards their plan, whatever plan they had chosen, if it was just employee spouse, if they had children, whatever, they could continue the same coverage, which was my big concern, but they still get five hundred dollars towards it. And it really, from a budgetary standpoint and our ability to sustain, this is a much more sustainable plan over time than what we're dealing with now. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
Is there any questions from the council?
So, I have some questions. So, I guess, uh, it, for me, it's kind of come together, I mean, we've, we've talked a little bit about it. It's kind of really the, the first real good opportunity for me to really dig into it, look at it right here, and, uh, I mean, it's very important, obviously. Um, I understand that the, the issue with the city, the, the liability terms, but if you were to, first of all, if you, do you have any, is this documented in like an employee handbook? This is your retirement system, this is your benefit, is that, is it documented somewhere?
Yes.
Where, where is it documented?
Christie, how would you speak on that?
We have a, um, we have a retirement, we have a benefit summary that we put out every year, that lists all of our benefits. Plus, in our online, our employee self-service, um, online, uh, portal, all of the documents that relate to all of our benefits are there for our employees.
Right, so, employees have been, they've, they, they have knowledge of what the current policy is, so we're making a change. So that's why it's so, so important, because we're making a change now to that, that current system. I mean, it's, uh, when you work, invest a number of years with a, with a, an employer, I mean, making changes like this can, is, is very important. Um, what, what's, uh, what is your, on a, on the, as far as the insurance goes right now, what is the, the employee's, um, uh, participation?
What do they pay, or?
Correct.
Zero.
So, so the insurance is provided at a hundred percent, which is, I would say, pretty rare, right?
Yes. So.
Very reasonable.
Well, I'll let you finish, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, I mean, so current employees are, are not paying anything toward, toward insurance?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's a, that's a benefit toward their, their salary, I mean, that's, that's huge. Okay.
So the other option, you know, to that is, the city, typically in government, you don't receive the higher wages, but you do receive better benefits, and this is a, when I, when I say next to the retirement insurance is the second biggest recruiting tool that we use, enable to get other employees from other agencies. Um, it is strongly used, I know in the police and fire department. Brandon uses it as well in public utilities. It's just, I, I cannot express what would happen if something happened to those plans, and we would be filling a lot of vacancies, I would put it to you that way. On the other side of this coin, on the insurance, is, you know, if you, the plan we have now, everybody's working till sixty, because they, you know, I gotta have insurance, I gotta work till sixty, so, employees are being, they have to make a determination, do I want to retire at this age, or do I need to keep working till I get to rule sixty? And also, typically, we're paying more in wages to those employees, because they've been here fifteen, twenty-plus years. I myself will retire at age fifty-one, and I would have to make a determination, if nothing happens, do I want to work nine more years? Do I get sixty, or do I want to do something else? Uh, we have a lot of people in the boat now that are fifty-seven, fifty-eight, that can currently retire, but they have no insurance. So I think, like, this is something, this is something I used, looked at also with public safety, is, do I, you know, there's nothing wrong with a fifty-year-old, but I know, at my age right now, I don't want to be crawling in a fire at forty-six, and I don't know I want to be doing it at age fifty-eight either. It's just a fact of life that the older you get, the harder those kind, kind of jobs are, even when public utilities, do we need a fifty-nine-year-old, you know, trying to find a water main at two o'clock in the morning, or do we want a twenty-year-old in it, you know? But that's the other side of this coin, that we also looked at, is if we do change the rule of sixty, or the rule of eighty and add, you know, twenty years, but you're going to go at your retirement date, for some, it's forty-nine years old, because they started here when they were nineteen or eighteen, and they've worked here thirty years. So that's the other side of, I know there's a few police officers in attendance tonight, maybe, that might retire when this is approved, if it's approved. But that's a decision they will have to make.
Yeah, question? No questions.
So. All right, so, I'm just, I guess, what I keep thinking is, is hearing it tonight, so you're saying, you all determined the, the five hundred dollars and went to the actuary, I can't, I cannot say that right, but.
Actuary.
Actuary, you all came up with that and went to them. Is, they didn't look at, say, a percentage, or, um, you know, I know, I understand that you have different rates for, you know, if it's an employee, employee spouse, employee dependents, or whatever, as far as insurance goes, but is, is there a, did you ever consider some type of percentage? I mean, if we look at five, five hundred dollars, is a, I don't know, kind of like a stipend, added to their salary, I mean, after ten years, what's five hundred dollars worth? I mean, what, what happens on?
Well, five hundred is a percentage of their overall, overall cost. I believe the committee came out with something a little bit less than five hundred dollars. It was, you remember, four? Yeah, four hundred, uh, we use five hundred, because it's just, it's just an easy round number, um, to come up with, and that, that's, that's the only reason we looked at it. And we also looked at years of service, you know, do we want to say ten years of service, you get two fifty, fifteen years of service, you get four hundred, thirty-plus years, you get this. After talking with the actuary and other cities that do it, twenty-eight years was the common. Most cities don't offer spouse insurance, but ours does, because of the plan we have. But, you know, like I said, we, we have to make sure that we don't, my job is to make sure the city's financially stable before we do this, and this was a very good, in my opinion, medium of bouncing, keeping people here, recruiting the staff that we want, and then providing something after, but yet being financially responsible.
And Bill, I think too, and Danny, we talked about this today, if, I think where you're going, cost of living wise, you know, insurance, you know, quadruples and it's still. I, I, I hear you, but at any point, council in the future could amend the five hundred dollars.
Yes, unlike.
And increase it if, if we hit that in the future. We do have that ability, or the existing council at that point.
Yeah, that second document I gave you all, whatever you write in there, is going to be the law, but it can be amended by future councils. You can give it, and you can take it.
And then, one last question, just, just so I understand the, the, what the actuary gave you, I mean, why, why do they base their data on, uh, twenty-twenty? They just, or?
It was the last audit, I believe, current audit, that's the last current audit.
Okay. Anybody else from the council? Okay. I'll make a motion that we adopt this new insurance policy, uh, per what Danny has said. Scenario number three, yes, that the council package has. All right, is that, um, just to spell it out, Danny, is that the current retirement city pays five hundred and the employee?
Yeah, so I'll read scenario three for you.
Scenario three, okay.
Three says, "Assumes that the current retirees continue receiving benefits other than the current plan provisions, but amend the plan provisions for future retirees as followed. One, future retirees will be paid five hundred per month until age sixty-five. Two, benefits are not payable to the spouse of future retirees. Three, retirees with eighty points," that's the rule of eighty, "must have at least twenty years of service." Third op, or fourth option, whenever, this is, this study was also figuring out a hundred percent of the employees take it. And then, last is assumes that OPEP trust is established.
I have a question, real quick, Danny. When it says benefits are not payable to the spouse of future retire, retirees, is that the, is that if a, the retiree passes?
No, that's, well, yes, that's where we got confused, where we thought was offered, but that's saying that if, if the retiree passes, the five hundred will not be transferred to the spouse.
Would the spouse still be eligible?
If the spouse, if the retiree dies, the spouse can get COBRA for thirty-six months, is that correct?
Under the current plan that they're under, under their cost, perfect.
Yes, for thirty-six months only.
Okay. And we have a second. So, that motion, we have a second, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed.
Skip, you can ask your question at community feedback.
All right. Okay, Danny, do we also need to make a motion to set up this trust?
You just did. That's an option three.
All in it, okay.
And the only other thing I have is the other packet, um, is the OPEV agreement. This is something, regardless if we approve or not approve, we have to update the agreement, and that agreement is saying that the city will use GMA's third-party actuary. But Robin has not reviewed it, so we can probably come back in January and give her time to amend it and, and ask for approval then, along with the, um, agreements which y'all just approved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all, sir.
Thank you so much, Chairman Danny Ford, coming down to city manager's report, Danny Roberts.
Said enough, sir. That's it.
It's in the, it was in our packet.
It's in the packet. This is like the land use map, this is, uh, a management plan for solid waste. This is, uh, Northeast Georgia Region Commission requires this, I believe.
Yes. All right. All right, so we need a motion on that.
I make the motion, we approve the resolution?
We have a motion approving the resolution, we have a second by Danny Ford, any discussion on that resolution? All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, resolution has been passed, six and oh. Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
All right, thank you so much. Coming down to, uh, our city attorney that she's having a, you all right, city attorney? Okay, we'll let you.
Thankfully, I have no actionable items, because I'm having a sneezing attack, so.
Oh, sneezing attack?
Yes, nothing from me.
All right. All right, this is, uh, I, oh, we got to go to executive session, huh? I thought, I thought I was gone. All right, so.
Well, it's, yes, we need to go into executive.
We need to go to executive session.
You can thank me for this one.
All right, so.
Yes, I thought it was going to be under you.
Executive session, we got to, we got to leave for just a few minutes, so if I don't see you before we come back, have a blessed Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, spend it with your loved ones, love them, hug them, kiss them, because you never know what's going to happen next, right? So with that being said, um, I'll make a motion to adjourn, I mean, to go into executive session. We have a, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All opposed, like sign?
What's up with that? What is up with that? You did it, right? Is that, is that your chair?
What is this?
I'm grabbing your chair, sorry.
Jay, what is this on the script?
Wow, everybody left. Good day. Alright, so we got enough here to, yeah. I make a motion to get back into regular session.
Second.
All in, all opposed, like sign. All in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Four no. One, two, three, four. Approved, to get back into regular session. Alright, so... Alright, so at this time, we met in executive session for real estate issue and no action to be taken. With that being said, I'm gonna ask a motion to adjourn. We have, I'm gonna ask for a motion, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The meeting has been adjourned. Now we got community feedback. Any, not much here. Skip, you wanna say a few words? Mike, 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 hold up a minute. We got a mic, we can't hear you.
Lucy, I got all night. Hell, we can be here all night, right Lisa? Now, I was just going to mention, so there's some concerns in the audience when they mentioned that the city paid for all the employees' insurance. Some people in the audience got the impression that the city paid for all the dependents' insurance. I know it don't, but I just wanted to express that so you could express that they don't. That's all, just to help. No big deal at all.
Sounds good.
Well, I know. But, but you know, when you hear people in the community talking about it next week, it don't really matter which reality. It's what they built into, "I heard this." So, other than that, did a good job.
Great. I see, I see, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Skip, I didn't mean to cut you off like that.
Yes, you did.
By the way, I see, uh...
I told Lynn that you enjoyed this thing here.
I say, young lady, I haven't met you before. You wanna say a few words, ma'am? Who introduced you?
Hello, you guys. I'm Olivia J. Price and actually, I'm here for Ann Hunt Singer. And just to get more involved with the committee, I mean, with the community. And I look forward to being with you guys in the future, I'm very excited. I've been here for four years now, coming from Tequila, originally from Florida. And I love Loganville. It's growing, it's maturing, and I see a lot of advancements here. I was just talking to Mr. Skip.
Yeah.
On a couple of things that you guys were thinking about doing, but didn't really pin into motion. But there's a lot of things out here, I see an opportunity and ways to make more money. You know, but I'm excited and it's a pleasure to see you guys.
Do you live in the city limits?
Wait, hang on. Olivia, didn't you graduate from something today?
Oh, actually, that was last week.
It was last week, I just saw it today.
I just graduated from the Georgia Association of Realtors Women Counselor Realtors for the Leadership Academy. And I just got installed too for the Women's Council Realtors Membership Director. And I'm gonna be installed next week for the Northeast Atlanta Metro Association of Realtors for their Board of Directors as well.
Great. Do you live in the city, Olivia?
Yeah, I do, like, five minutes from here.
Oh, great, thank you.
It sounds like Olivia may have missed some meetings in the recent past and was voted to be put on all these things while she was absent. That's usually what happens, isn't it?
Oh, great.
It sounds like Olivia may have missed some meetings in the recent past and was voted to be put on all these things while she was absent.